Kick us off, but um so yes. Uh so. Uh good evening, everybody. Uh call to order the town board work session for March twenty seven, twenty twenty four at five P M. As always, we are virtual, which means we're streaming uh to Facebook, to YouTube, and to our website as well as uh we have a uh open Zoom meeting uh that is available at the top of our agenda if you'd like to join in in the conversation. Uh next up. Rich, why don't you lead us in the pledge? Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so uh this is a work session uh to discuss a draft accessory dwelling unit law uh that uh I think everyone there's extra paper copies up here. We do have it on the uh website if anybody wants to grab that. Uh but basically um you know, we've been having some conversation about A D U's, these accessory dwelling units. Um to kind of bring everybody up to speed, it's uh the accessory dwelling unit is an additional living space. Uh generally speaking, on a uh plot of land that has a single family home on it. Um and the idea here, the general idea is to um allow for a little bit of diversity in housing, allow different options. You know, for example, you know, for a long time, if you lived in Manhattan, one of the single family homes, it was a certain size. You know, probably a garage, uh things like that. As we've seen, there's been developments of rentals um of all different kind of forms and factors. And really, these accessory dwelling units are meant to fill um, I believe the term is it's middle housing or missing middle.
Middle housing.
Where um it it allows for more flexibility for folks. Uh it allows for someone who has a single family home to put together an A D U and either allow um a family member to live there or rent it out. Uh and it's a way that we can kind of leverage existing infrastructure while adding um places for folks to live. And so um I was hoping Sarah would be here to give us a a little bit more. Do you want to kind of just walk us through the the draft law that we've got?
Sure.
And then let's just, let's kind of wo- work through an overview and then we can kind of open up for discussion, questions, things like that. So I do also, before we jump in, I want to thank both our planning board and our zoning board for being well represented here. Um I hope that we can, you know, especially for stuff like this, to to keep this happening, I think is a great way to bring everybody into the conversation. Uh and just make sure that whatever's, you know, happening at the town board level, we've got the insight of the other boards that are going to be dealing with this um someday, so.
Sure. So I was approached a month ago, I think, uh about drafting up some proposed law for uh accessory dwelling units. And uh I have looked at some other villages, the towns, I looked at the New York State law and coming up with this particular law. As it is with any initial draft law, there are going to be comments, there are going to be revisions. This is an initial draft. It's an initial starting point that will probably be extensively revised and I'm glad that so many people are here tonight to actually be able to comment on it. I have no pride of office here, as I told you, Rich, uh to the extent people think it's the wording is confusing or think that any restrictions I put in there are are uh not right. Tell me, I'm gonna take down notes on everything everybody has to say and and this isn't a law yet, so this this is the opportunity to change anything to make sure it makes sense. Uh the the lion's share of the work related to accessory dwelling units will fall on the plate uh under this law. They are going to be the ones who are going to be issuing the special permit. So I want a lot of planning board input because the way this is drafted, the planning board is going to be dealing with these pretty regularly. I I want to make sure the planning board feels comfortable with the way it's drafted, with the considerations and criteria they they consider. Um but basically, it's it's a special permit process that would go through the planning board. The planning board would issue a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. As far as the accessory dwelling unit goes and the area regulations that apply to it, whatever zone it is in, I think right now we've allowed it in R one, R two, R three, R four, and R A, the bulk regulations applicable to any district would apply to that. So the setback requirements, the um play requirements, front yard requirements, things like that would apply to to that structure if it's in that zone. Um you know, as far as conditions that can be put on the actual accessory dwelling unit. You have broad powers under municipal, the planning board will have broad powers under municipal home rule law to put conditions that they feel will help the health, safety, and welfare of residents uh in in kind of going through that process. But that that's kind of the broad overview of it. I know, Rich, you had some questions and and I I actually have received some comments too uh since this has gone out of that I think were really good comments that I didn't think of when I was drafting it. So, Rich, some of yours will probably overlap. I know somebody mentioned there's no limit right now to how many A D U's can be on a property, which is I think is an absolutely important consideration we need to make. And maybe we have an answer as a town, maybe we don't have an answer as a town, but something we need to think about um. So does anybody have any questions right now as it relates to the law and why maybe draft something?
I'm just wanna, is the applicable state laws, what was Senate Bill forty five, forty seven A adopted February fifth, twenty twenty one? Is that?
I.
I struggle but try and figure out what state.
Yeah, well, because there's stuff pending right now too, yeah.
Federal안사 This is entitled Article sixteen oh.
I don't remember which one is the most, I can, I can find out which is the most reasonable. I I looked at, I I think I looked at the law from, there was a law passed in nineteen that I looked at, and then I think it was amended again in twenty one. But a lot of what we're doing has nothing to do with that law. Uh what we're doing is local zoning regulation. New York State does not get involved in local zoning regulation. The towns do that pursuant to New York Municipal Home Rule Law. So I think the more important thing that I looked at was what other towns, villages, and districts they are doing.
I don't necessarily, other than reading through this law, if it's the one in effect.
Yep.
For this one, you have a population of a million, the smallest one, the lowest limitation you put in is five hundred fifty square feet.
The the lowest, you mean the?
Square footage.
Square footage. So the lowest square footage, but we're at six hundred, so we're over the middle.
Well, that's where I'm just.
Yeah, so what, so New York State is establishing a minimum, we're over the, like, that that's the floor. We can be over the floor, we want to be over the floor.
I I don't like, I'm just trying to figure out, I look through this, do we have, how do we, is this the law we live by or?
The law we live by is the law we adopt. Under municipal home rule.
Don't have to conform to the state law?
We can over, we actually have the power to override the state law in certain areas under municipal home rule powers, which which we would argue if if it was ever challenged. Uh but I I think we're, based on the law I reviewed, I I believe we're within the confines of what your state is requiring.
I'm not clear where I am in the context.
Hey, open the law.
Joe, I've got, I I mean, I could spend ten minutes walking through my comments if that's okay.
That's fine, that's totally fine.
Okay. First thing is more of a housekeeping thing. On the second page, accessory dwelling unit. If we put parentheses, A D U, we'd save a lot of paper throughout the document from putting accessory dwelling units in every single paragraph that we have.
That's fine.
That's my first. Um within that paragraph, I think we want to include, if if it's a dwelling unit, I think we want to be sure that there's sleeping quarters or bedroom, bathroom, kitchen in the unit, and I would add that to that paragraph.
Uh just so I know which paragraph we're talking about.
Uh where where it defines accessory dwelling unit on page two.
Okay, yep.
Where you say what it is.
Yep.
And I would, like I said, put parentheses after accessory dwelling unit, A D U. And and we would think that sleeping quarters or bedroom, however you want to word it, bathroom, kitchen would be part of that that we would require. And within that paragraph, it says, and if it is located in an accessory building. Are you talking about like if there's a barn on the property?
Yeah, like a garage and somebody wants to put an apartment over a garage or something like that, or like a carriage house.
One of the examples of.
I think the example I had thought of was just like, let's say you want to do a carriage house above or apartment above a garage or something like that.
Okay, so it's an existing building.
It's an existing building that you're turning into an accessory dwelling.
Okay. Um this is a personal comment, and it doesn't have to be that way. I would like to see that it's behind the primary residence. Wherever you put this, it can't be in front of the primary residence. But again, that's just my personal.
So that's, so just in general, that would be, so the front yards, basically behind the front yard setback, essentially.
Yes. Well, behind the front yard period, you want it behind the actual primary residence. You wouldn't want to see it, even though it's behind the setback, I wouldn't want to see it in front of the house.
What if it, for an instance, it was like, let's say you had the, you know, the whole house setback, and this apartment is going on top of the garage? It would be kind of in line, so like in line or behind?
Yes, that would be fine with, I I mean, again, these are just my comments. I'm not saying that I'm representing anybody. Uh clarification in one fifty five, twenty nine, all permitted accessory uses except accessory dwelling units requiring an accessory use permit from the town planning board shall have site plan review. Am I reading that, that you don't need site plan review for an accessory dwelling unit?
No, you you actually do, uh because if you look at a later section of the of the uh.
But if there's a contradictory statement here.
Yeah, so what I, I think what I was intending to do here was one fifty five, and I don't have the code in front of me, so do you have the code?
You looking for that local law?
No, no, the actual code. But I think you have, you have, and I just was talking to Lisa about this before. You have multiple accessory, you have multiple types of special permits.
Yes.
You have accessory use permits.
Yep.
Which is what one fifty five, twenty nine talks about, and there's different criteria that you consider for an accessory use permit. Then you also have special permits, and you have different criteria you consider for a special permit.
Correct.
So I wanted to make this, I wanted to make the conditions apply that relate to special permits to A D U's not to accessory permits, because I think there's more teeth there than the special permits. So what I'm doing is I'm attempting to take accessory dwelling units out of the accessory use permit so that the planning board will have more teeth when it comes time to actually consider issuing a special permit.
I I appreciate you putting up with my questions here.
Oh, you're good.
And we're all learning at the same time, tough.
If you go down to number two on the same page, uh establish smaller dwelling units without increasing building density. Isn't that exactly what we're doing? Increasing building density?
Uh.
We're trying to increase density without increasing sprawl.
That's what we're trying.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so maybe that's, we're taking another look.
Just, just.
Going to this too, I think that kind of language comes from um the idea that the gen- the general idea is that someone's going to reuse an existing space because of the cost associated with building something new, but I think that's, maybe we find a better way to word that to say.
And I'm just saying that, I, that needs a look, I guess.
Yeah, because you might, it might be part of an existing structure or it might be adding a structure. And if you're adding a structure with.
Yeah, if you're adding a structure, your existing density doesn't decay. That's absolutely factually true, so.
And then I guess a clarification on number five down below on the next page. Promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the town of Manles and preserve property values. I'm not sure what that means.
Well, I think by adding accessory dwelling units to certain properties, you probably enhance the property value by doing that, the actual.
Maybe.
Is that just speaking to the five questions that this idea goes through?
No, no, this is just, this is setting forth the purpose for the law. So if anybody wants to glean what the legislative intent is of the town when passing this law, they would look at this section of the of the uh code.
It's worth looking at and trying to see, is there a better way to get the idea across?
Yes, that's all I'm saying. I I read it, I didn't understand it. Um you answered a question that I had before, how many can go on the block? And I was sitting back thinking about this, and it may be based on acreage. If you have five or less acres, you can't have an A D U. If you have five to ten, you can have two, something like that so that it would give clarity to the planning board of what we're looking at, what we can approve or not approve, or, you know, give us a reason to say, no, you can't do that.
One uh one comment that I received beforehand, which I thought was a good comment, was if the property is a non-conforming lot as is, it probably shouldn't qualify for an A D U.
Agreed.
So that probably, that language should probably be added somewhere into the into the actual law. Um I don't know if that answers, it doesn't necessarily answer your question completely, but it at least addresses like the super small lots that shouldn't have, that really shouldn't even have a house on it to begin with. They definitely shouldn't have an A D U on top of the house. Uh so that addresses like the very small lots, uh at least. But we can look at an acreage requirement, you know, saying if you're under five acres, you're allowed to have a certain size uh A D U. If you're over, you know, over, under an acre, you're allowed a five hundred square foot A D U if you're over.
I think there's got to be something, and keep in mind, as you go through this law, most of the R ones, the R fives are on septic and sewer. When you get to R A, I'm sorry, not septic and sewer, they're on town water and and sewer. And when you get to R A, it's septic and wells, and that's a consideration that's got to be taken into consideration as you do this.
I think there's some examples on about a third of an acre um that A A R P has cited, but that is an existing building, so there's already a garage there, and there was a conversion that happened to that garage to make it an A D U. So how would you feel about that being allowable if that structure is already there?
If it does not have water and sewer today, it's just a garage. That needs to be taken into consideration. And if it's on a septic, because for example, most homes that are on septic were, the the septic tank and the drainage fields were sized for the four bedroom, three house, or three bath house, whatever it is. So if you're gonna build another house, you would have to put another septic and leach field in, not to mention maybe need to put another well. I I I don't know.
I think, I think there's something there to maybe consider, saying that, you know, in, you know, in the A D U law, maybe especially this first pass, is strictly for folks that are on town water and on sewer, because the idea is to to further use existing infrastructure.
Yep.
Whereas I almost think like, when we talk about like R A parcels and like five acres, I almost think of that, it's like, well, maybe it's time for a subdivision. You know what I mean? And like, just having a, you know, um because I think too, in the acreage and things like that, R two is the one that gives me the most worry about, like Homewood, I am almost of the opinion that R two should be included in the first pass. Um because as a former resident of the Homewood Development, it's really tight in there. Um and, you know, there's barely enough room for everybody's sheds. Um and I think it would help us not have to maybe um make things so specific about significantly smaller lots, like it would remove some of the restrictions we feel required because we're just not even considering putting.
It's like Fremont, I think that's R two too. You got all those houses on Davis, Donour.
Maybe, I think there's a spot that's R two. I think most of it's R two, but there might be a couple R two spots.
But I I.
Going back to not, going back to the non-conforming lots, rather than saying no to that outright, maybe saying not building a new structure and maybe allowing retrofitting of a structure on the lot there, like their garage if it's there, allowing a retrofitting rather than adding a new structure, rather than banning it outright. Is a thought.
And I I I appreciate you guys putting up with my comments, I.
Joe, do you think we'd be able to get a account of, you know, single family homes that are in non-conforming lots? That's not a reason to kind of use the index, right?
No, it would be fairly easy because all I would have to do is put in the areas in which our lot, which have homes, and then I would sort them through angov to show the acreage. That would be a lot, that would say if they're on the appropriate lot size. But as for setbacks from side yard, that would probably be the one that would be a little more difficult to say that you're too close on a side yard setback from the existing code that was done in nineteen ninety versus today's current code. So they were probably in uh compliance in nineteen ninety, but looking at it today, they would not be, but the lot area could do relatively easily.
I I'd be happy to see those stats.
I I I apologize for being late. I did um talk to Joe uh earlier, so it delivered some some comments. I I like what I'm hearing about going through like a first pass law that may be a a little narrower than here's the whole town, because the town is so different. There's so, you know, there's those small homes, there's people who are on twenty acres. And to take them all the same in the first pass, and this is new, I I think that's, I think that's just a great idea.
Well, I think R A is maybe a zone that we consider not part of the first one. Because again, it's, you're gonna run into those problems with less infrastructure more often. And again, like, maybe the goal is actually to just say, if you, you know, if you're looking to build a second structure under six acre R A lot, maybe it's time for a subdivision. And you, you just have a separate parcel and it's gonna have its own.
This is a comment I get. I I would want to lock, I own property, I owned a property on Fremont Road between Myers and two ninety eight. They had two garages. They had a great attached garage and then a huge garage in the back, two-stall garage, which could have been retrofitted. But I would say, you know, do we have to think about requiring somebody now to upgrade and tie in or create a secondary septic and make sure it has water and electric, which, so this building had electric, it just needed water and septic?
But I would want to tell somebody out there, no, you're you're out of this opportunity to keep a loved one home because you're in an R A district, but if you look at that property, it's the perfect property for an A D U. And that that building, I'm talking about setback, and there's plenty of room to put a secondary septic for a one-bedroom, you know, little little building.
I guess that would fall on the planning board to, you know, look at and determine whether that, it makes sense or not.
But but what were you talking about, locking that, locking R A out in the law, then the planning board would just say, no, we can't do it because the law.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something that needs to be discussed because there's probably R A lots that are a hundred acres. And, you know.
I'd like to give the planning board, I have to look at each one, and just say, R H.
Okay, I only have a couple more comments.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we need to exclude R A totally. I think there's a lot of opportunities in R A, and if we're putting the other restrictions and stuff for the planning board, I I would be in support of saying we don't need to exclude R A. I'm too, using too many negatives, but, so I would be in support of including R A.
Okay, and B, and B four. The minimum floor area for an accessory dwelling unit shall be six hundred square feet. I think we've got to be more specific that that's living area because you can have a garage or a breezeway or whatever, I don't know what they could put on, something like that, that wouldn't be living area. So I think that just needs to be clarified. Um I'm sorry I'm taking so long. Then you go to the next page, and I'm in one, two, oh, there's two twos. So the second two at the bottom of the page. The building inspector or his heard designate shall conduct a physical inspection of the proposed accessory dwelling unit. I think that needs to be clarified because you can't do an inspection of a proposed dwelling unit.
I think that's more so for the retrofitting.
If it's a building that's existing.
Exactly, yeah, we should, we should clarify that.
Clarify that, yep, great. The the other, now on the next page, I don't even know where I am, the top paragraph, that talks about the method of water supply and sewage disposal. I know we dealt with Aqua, and this is where water supply from the town or the county, where they wanted separate lines for separate buildings, it couldn't be the same line. So I think we need to get a clarification from Aqua, what they want, and also from a sewage standpoint, can can two buildings tied with the same line that goes to a a main line? And I I don't have the answer to that, I just raised that.
I would clarify the Aqua one to the best of my knowledge. It's when the parcel is subdivided, you have to remove the water from the one parcel, and the newly subdivided parcel has to get its own water supply.
That wasn't the case with Tesla.
That one, they allowed Tesla to have two separate buildings with one water supply.
No, they made them have two supplies.
No.
Jamie, am I wrong?
Well, maybe ultimately, that that's what they, that's what they told us at the time, but they made, yeah.
I can tell you because I've heard that they have one water supply, because they weren't going to sprinkle their building C, the back building, because they would have had to run a new water line. So now if the building is ever subdivided, it has to get its own water supply.
Yeah, and that was not the.
They had off on their, on what they had said.
Okay, so that's one.
That.
Okay.
That is.
If that's their policy, then okay.
I do have questions, one of them being that if we, if it is private water, the requirement to drill a new well, so they are provided their own water, so building A can't shut the water off to dwelling unit B. But if it was, if, and we can talk with Aqua about this, if you are building a brand-new dwelling unit and it was being used, if, I think that if the, this is the way that was stated in here, is if they are being independently used of each other. So if that was the case, if I have a house and I build a pool house, I can run my water supply from my house to my pool house to have a bar, a bathroom, something of that nature. Now, when it, you get independent and you have a, another independent dwelling unit, that is where we start getting into, okay, should they have their own water meter? So that when the, just like with grid, you have to have two separate meters or do they need their own separate water meter so that they can, for billing purposes for the water use? If it's private water from a well, where do, where does the town want to come in, like saying what they are allowed to do?
Well, it also goes to wells and separation between leach fields and wells and all that stuff that has to be taken into consideration.
The the county will allow two buildings to go into the same septic tank and leach field if it is designed accordingly.
Right.
Which would, could, it may be more cost-effective to rip up the existing and put in new than putting in a separate because of the square footage requirement and setbacks you would have for putting in two on one property. But I did ask the question, they would allow that if it's, if designed appropriately?
And I guess, thank you, I've got no more questions or comments. I was just trying to think from a planning board standpoint of some clarification that I would like to make our job easier as we move forward with these things. So, thank you.
Question on um twenty nine point one, um section two. Um so you reference the different audiences that this potentially worked for. Um and you include relatives of existing residents of Manles. Could you also add caregivers, because that's a common use for A D U's? And I wondered also if the need was there to include the word fixed when it references income, because does that indicate that somebody has approved that their income is fixed? I think if they want to create more housing stock by utilizing their home, garage, et cetera, that it doesn't matter if it's, if they're on a fixed income or not.
But it's so, that is within the legislative intent and purpose, and I think the idea is it's fixed, low, and moderate incomes is what it's trying to serve, and I don't think it's necessarily a compound income.
No, I think comma would be.
You can have a comma after that.
Yes.
Is that Cornell comma, what is it called?
It's like twenty-page case law about a comma.
Conversation about accessory dwellings seem to primarily rest on the concept of a freestanding unit. It seems likely we may have conversions where the garages are basements. Um and this issue of public utilities, water, and sewer, if you're doing a conversion, if you're doing an attachment, you're expanding but attached to an existing building, or you're doing something like they call it a junior accessory dwelling unit, which within a main house, you take part of an existing main house. What, does existing building code deal with how the utilities are dealt in those situations, or does there need to be some other way of thinking about that?
A lot of that is outlined by the purveyor of it, so grid would be the one that required two meters. Aqua is the one, because the existing building code will touch on if you were to modify your basement into living space. But I think what happens is, is there's this differentiation between you having a single home and then making it a two-family home, and by that, I mean independently living with each other. So you have clear separation of the families quote-unquote living in them. So if you were to um take a if you were to take a single family home and add a living quarter above the garage for your family members in your existing home, and add a game room, a theater, something of that nature, as long as that they are connected, like, there's plenty of houses in the town that have these bonus rooms that if you walked in there, you would say, well, someone could live in this area. So the separation between when it becomes a single family and a separately independent family in that dwelling unit, because that would be. And they they talk about this in the multiple dwelling law. Which is based out of New York City and I have some of that where it talks about exclusively for two families, single families. And the separation between a house and a townhouse and how those are viewed within the building code. So this ADU, if it is. Attached to the house and you have a garage that's attached and you're going to put another living quarter and rent it out. It becomes a multiple-family dwelling unit because you have an independent living, so they would need their own means of egress. And that they would need their own. Because it is there, they would all have to be interconnected, the smoke detectors, the carbon monoxide detectors. So there are. When you get into the building code for single-family connected and multifamily, like a townhouse or a two-family dwelling unit. What the code would require for it, and that would all be subjective to each. Plan going forward for how they plan on developing.
And see, it's on public water and sewer. It's totally different than if it's on a well and a septic. I mean, there's two totally different ways to look at that thing.
So be assumed that ADU would need its own means of egress entrance distinct from the other dwelling unit.
Yes.
And this touches on parking, but doesn't get into that type of criteria where, you know.
Yeah, no, it doesn't. It doesn't. Do we want to. Require additional parking for accessory dwellings? That's the question. Like this does not require additional parking.
Well, actually, that's not clear. It's.
Well, it says it it says it's not required, but the planning board may require it as part of its.
It's like the shopping's price.
Let me read you the problem that I have with it is number six. It says although no additional parking shall be mandatory. And then it goes on to say. For a parking assessment shall be made. And then number eight says during the review, the planning board should consider the effects of parking in the light. I think number six is a problem for us because, you know, you can go to the appeals, you know, it's going to be appealed and there's going to be sentences, although no additional parking shall be mandatory. I think if you remove that sentence, it says a parking assessment shall be made, it's fine.
My point is, yeah, as if it's a ten-acre parcel and the, you know, the house up here and the house down here, you don't want to drive away and park it. Yeah, that's good. That's a good point.
So do you think, Joe, that there should be some, I know this might open a can of worms, but I don't intend to, but. There should be something in there regarding like short-term rentals for then somebody building one of those structures to create like a Airbnb?
I think if you're going to address short-term rentals as a town, now is probably the time to do it.
There'd been some consideration for, do we put some, because like basically, it seems like the low hanging fruit, you can have a ban. Which I don't think really anybody wants to do. We did, I will say, when Alyssa and I went to New York City for the conference this year. We talked to, I think it was a company called Grandpas. And they do can hire them to monitor your short-term rental units. So they have stuff that searches all the different websites and stuff like that and tells you, you've got about this many. I think we had six. So it's a question now of if this is opening the door and we are concerned about those short-term rentals. Then we need to kind of figure out, are we going to do something with those first prior to this or?
Yeah, I know. When I read through it, I was just thinking that it should be something that we should always travel through.
Because I I don't know if your does your code address short-term rentals at all as it is right now.
I don't.
State law says thirty days minimum rental.
Yeah, but state law, I state law wouldn't regulate short-term rentals with other towns of Manlius. The town of Manlius would have to come up with some kind of a law. I mean, I've got, I said this at the planning supposedly, I've got towns on every end of the spectrum. I've got some towns that just banned short-term rentals completely. So any rental under thirty days is just banned within the town. I've got others that allow it with a with a permit. And then I've got others that just allow it completely. So, I mean, if that if. We want to address that as a town as well, like we certainly can. There's been plenty of towns around us that have adopted all different types of laws regulating it. We can. Easily incorporate those laws into into that.
I would encourage the town board to look at that.
So maybe one of the things it could be is as part of the special permit, could the special permit dictate whether or not it's.
No, because at at time, whatever the reason the person built it for, the next owner can do whatever else. So you can't, zoning is forever.
Well, that's a question that maybe needs to be addressed.
If I'm, I think the use, the reasons for why we're doing this kind of helps us out with it. Where it says that the reasons why we're doing it is to. Serve the populations which may be underserved, single persons, couples of all ages, fixed low-income, moderate to moderate incomes and relatives of existing residents of Manlius. It's not saying that we're doing it for people to make and to boost their incomes or necessarily or to provide short-term rentals or for vacation units. My only concern in here for that was that we're limiting it to only twenty-five of them, which might actually just try to have people do it for. Their income part of it. That was where I was concerned over, because then we're restricting people who might have the need for it for to be able to get it. With a limit, but I do think that we do need to address. A little bit more strongly the short-term rental aspects of it, and it's not just because that Grandpa searched children's unit in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, the town can do a moratorium on short-term rentals until we plan something out. I mean, that's easy for the town to do in the meantime.
And it shouldn't be part of this law because.
No, it should be separate law.
But with with the ADUs, while I don't, well, I think twenty-five is really low, I do think that. With this coming out, we there should be something in place to try to restrict it from, because then we're going to start seeing these popping up all over the place. Potentially as a use of short-term rentals, and that's not the intent behind this law, in my opinion. I think it's more of the intent to. Be used for caregivers, as Ingrid said, and for. People who, I mean, there's relatives whose children, I mean, children are moving back in with their parents after they graduate college because they can't afford housing anywhere, not just in the town of Manlius. And there are elderly parents who are moving back, who's are moving back in with their kids because of housing problems. Is for those purposes, and it's not meant for short-term rentals for vacationing or anything. So I do think we need to. Address it on another level like Rich had said separately.
I think we possibly could address it in this legislation. You don't call it short-term rental, but you you do put a limitation on that say the accessory dwelling unit. Is for permanent, you know, residency, which will define as. Take it on those three months, seven months. Now, you're always going to have an enforcement issue, but you always are going to enter a term rental anyway. But once. Someone gets, you know, they're like you said, once someone gets their hand on it, they have this extra. Income source and I and I can assure you, and I have clients who make a mint buck on short-term rental. And they are taking rentals out of the mainstream. Even, you know, in in a town you would not believe because they can make. In one month what they can make in a whole year. And and even where it's coming, they're in the vacation spot. So. If if the intent is to, what is it here? Then address it, but don't call it a short-term rental, but call it a a regulation relating to this accessory dwelling unit. I do agree, it probably needs to be addressed in general anyway.
There's something else also here with respect to this, Tom, kind of trying to wrap my head around it when I read this. Are we going to grandfather people that already have what an ADU is in essence?
Well, that's.
Or come in and apply for.
That was one of my motivations is they already exist.
Exactly.
And they're technically not legal, so.
So if if are they going to be, since we only have twenty-five as a sign. Are they going to be the ones that are rushing in and getting to twenty-five and we just defeat what we're trying to do, which is increasing.
So I think that from my mind, the twenty-five is probably too low a number. Because I think it's probably already twenty-five here.
But are we going to grandfather those other ones when they come in?
Well, they're out of compliance with the code, so they've got to come forward and actually apply for a special. They're not being grandfathered in. We're giving them an opportunity to come into compliance.
Okay, good, so we're clarifying.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So it's giving these people an option to actually come into compliance now and an option.
So the twenty-five will block your window very quickly.
Well, yeah.
It could it could make you a little bit busy.
Well, yeah, I think that's the thing is once people realize what it may take to come into compliance with it. They're either going to continue to operate illegally or they will. Put forth the right staff and get it, but I don't know how many of those people that are operating right now. In a non-conforming use will come in and take the extra staff.
Well, I think a lot of people that have that.
Unless we go and find them or it draws my attention in some manner in a in a bona fide complaint that I can act on. With enough where if they don't. Come in and obtain the ADU, that I'd be able to take them to court and the judge would have we'd have actual items against them. I. Think they'll have been probably continue to operate. What we're looking for now is to get anybody that wants to do this, to have them do it legally and right.
Yeah, I think one of the things is that the people that have them currently, they use as their B and B in the light. I think got into this, not not looking into whether it needs a permit. They're not like trying to break the law, that's my point. And now that they've been operating for a while, they think that they're fine. And so the operation, nobody's telling them no. And if they need to apply now, we need to make that clear through some sort of a communication to the community. And then, yes, we're going to be very busy for the twenty-five because a lot of people are going to.
I think the accessory dwelling unit is less than my concern and my concern more is with a building that has three or four apartments already in it. Because that is not in essence what an accessory dwelling unit is. That is a multifamily dwelling unit. And that is just, that's non-conforming and this ADU legislation is not going to help out someone who has. Three apartments in a single building.
It's on that one.
Yeah, they're they're just not, they're not in compliance and this isn't going to help them.
But I think it will help your enforcement.
Yes.
Because it's like, we've got this and you're doing this. So if someone brings it to your attention.
Thinking about the twenty-five limit that keeps being brought back up, I think that is too low. Especially saying that they can't go for a variance with ZBA. Because I'm just thinking about someone that actually really needs it for a caregiver or someone who needs it because their home can't be retrofitted for wheelchair use. So they have to do the accessory dwelling unit or something for that can be retrofitted or built for someone within a wheelchair. I don't know if we want to have it be twenty, I mean, if we want to have it be twenty-five with. The option for a variance with ZBA proving a need, or if we want to just remove that number and have it be a percentage of the number of units in the in the town or. Raise the number or what, but I don't, I like, I speak because of the short-term rentals, I I mean, twenty-five is too low, but I also don't want to have it be too much for. The for Tom's apartments particularly or the and the planning board to to. To bury them in it with all these coming through with accessory dwelling units. So we got to find some kind of a balance in there for twenty-five. I definitely think is too low.
I I think that'll, you can get that better in focus. If and when you look at the different properties and say, if you don't have five acres, you can't have one. If you're five to ten, you can have one. If you're ten to whatever the the numbers are, you can better focus in on the twenty-five. I I agree. I think if we're going to do this, twenty-five is low. But, you know, maybe it never gets built because. If you look at the numbers and and do this from an economic standpoint. You're talking about probably two hundred dollars a square foot construction cost. That's without a septic, without sewer, without water, a well, all those things. That would be roughly seven hundred dollars a month just for interest. Then you add the cost of the building, you know, getting some some money back on the mortgage. Then you have insurance and real estate tax and so on and so forth. Economically, the rents on these things, even for, this is a six hundred square foot building, could be seventeen hundred dollars to break even. So this isn't a low-income or moderate-income way to deal with housing. It's. Whatever, just that's something to think about as you go move move forward with this.
John Ernie has his hand up.
Go for it, Arnie.
And one of the questions that comes up is, as the density of housing increases. What's the cost to the town of the additional services that the additional people might require? Which is everything from schools, police, so forth and so on. And the second question is maintenance and management. Where the homeowner has an ADU, but the tenant is not a family person. Who's responsible for keeping up that entity and for the behavior of the people who are in it?
The property owner.
Yeah.
It's the same as a long-term rental. If there's a long-term rental and the tenants are dumping garbage in the front yard, we're going to go after the the property owner, not the tenant.
I would, I would suggest and hope that the person who owns the property would reside there. So the amount of absentee landlords is, we're reducing that. It, I just don't want that to get taken out though.
Right.
Well. Well, and I will say, Arnie, just to the to the question of services, I think it's a good one. You know, I think, you know, as this moves forward, we definitely want to consult with the schools. This for what we, you know, we might talk to them and they might ask to, you know, have a certain limit within school districts or something like that that we could take into consideration. And then, although, when we think about the services that, you know, each person is taking up from the town. This is a an effort to reduce essentially what that lot is costing us per resident, per tax hard on in. Because we're adding an additional person to the town, we're adding additional tax base without having more road to plow, you know, without having. You know, you can argue it's more uh more people to police, but it's still the same area. So in some ways, this is intended to allow for new residents. Who are coming in cheaper per residence, if that makes sense. But I think, you know, having a conversation with the schools is probably the first one. That really would kind of throw up a red flag of, you know, talking to them and and getting some insight, because, you know, if we, let's say we end up with the number two hundred. And they all go into one of the school districts, you know, they might not be able to handle that.
The school districts have commented on this though with it with Mike Ron and with the other potential developments we have coming in with apartments. So they weighed in on the general sense of increasing residence and. Like if you wanted to get an apartment right now in the town of Manlius, I've been looking every day for the last couple of weeks to see if anything comes up. Sure, none.
Yeah.
And if the there was a house up for a day, it was two thousand dollars a month. There's one up right now near the high school that's three thousand a month. So seventeen hundred, if your math is correct, is significantly more affordable. And if you're if you're doing it. For a lot of the reasons that I would anticipate people are doing this, they're probably not doing it. For tons of extra income, but I think probably more for a senior member of their family or for a child. And so to put up your kid in a place, you're going to end up spending far more than that somewhere else. And any facility, the nursing home or long-term care facility for a senior, you're going to be spending considerably more than seventeen hundred dollars a month. So. I think the numbers do shake out when you're looking at the need and the associated costs with with alternatives.
Caitlin, I use six hundred square feet. If you go to twelve hundred square feet, it wouldn't it wouldn't be double. It would be significantly more than seventeen hundred.
Right, but if you're, but if those are still the problems that you're solving, when you're looking at what's generally available in the area. It's still a solution that is, one, about available at all, and two, more affordable.
I think we could also take a look at the impact on schools and do some research on that because my impression is that more often than not, it's for an adult child. Or a caregiver or an elderly family member who needs care. It's typically not for a family of school-aged children based on the size.
So.
If you have some questions or comments, then I'll do like Rich and just go through them quickly. Back in the beginning for accessory dwelling unit, I think it is important that we define what that includes or does not include. Does it have to have a kitchen? Does it have to have a bathroom? With bedrooms, I think it could get confusing because it could be a studio. So I don't know if you can say it has to have bedrooms or a certain amount of bedroom.
We did put that in here.
Yeah, it's two bedroom.
Right. So that might need to be looked at because. Um, you don't need a bedroom with like people and like especially these kinds of things.
Did you have a preference? Do you as far as?
I think it needs to be discussed. I mean, I'm throwing this out there for discussion because I'm, as a planning board member, I'm looking at ways when projects come before us. What are the criteria that we can use to most easily communicate with an applicant or move it through the process quickly, either by saying, no, you're not ready, no, it doesn't apply. Or here's what you need to look at. So it eliminates gray area. Because if it were to say it has to have a bedroom and they come with a studio, then we're questioning ourselves.
I think in terms of preference, I think a studio is sufficient. I don't think we need to be carving out bedrooms.
I I thought of the same thing. I mean, how do you live in it if you can't? If you're going to require water, you have to be able to use the water, you have to be able to prepare food so that you can eat and be able to go to the bathroom.
Just so you know, New York State has the definition of a dwelling unit. So if you even, and you have to be able to live, sleep, eat, cook in sanitation. So my thought is that before it even gets, before it even gets to the planning board, there would be an initial review by myself for.
Okay.
The bulk lot requirements, the construction of it.
We should incorporate that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they, they do have to have, like, if they don't have a bathroom, it's not an accessory dwelling unit.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified somehow.
I wouldn't even send them to the, because I'm, my hope is that if I do the, the review of it first, then you guys aren't getting bogged down with things that you're gonna ultimately say, this wasn't even ready to get to me.
So was, was, was that in mind, where, where did we come up with the six hundred as a minimum square foot?
Uh, that was from looking at other towns and kind of where.
Just kind of.
So we don't know what they were thinking.
It's like with the tiny homes are like, there's a standard term, you really get smaller than that and you kinda have trouble getting all those things.
Right.
Here, early in our conversation, we talked about R one and R two, the size of lots, the size of buildings. You had six hundred square feet, I think they're gonna make it impossible perhaps for them to participate. Eyes. I, I, you can do smaller, may not be the interest, but it seems to me at six hundred square feet, a portion of our town is not gonna be able to participate. The homewood, which maybe, probably it shouldn't, but uh, you know, if you take a bedroom, a closet, kitchen, dining, and a bay, I think you can do that in three hundred square feet.
So.
Not our choices, but if somebody's trying to do an accessory dwelling unit, it's not a, the term accessory has some meaning, I think. If it's not a freestanding market rate, middle of the existing housing stock kind of situation, this is clearly an accessory event. And it's, in my mind, six hundred square feet is given some of our housing stock and our zoning and lot sizes. Is it a threshold that it actually becomes exclusionary for part of our community?
I'd be in favor of using that, because I think, I, I think that we should try to make this, if we're gonna do this, we should try to make this open to as many people as possible. I don't think limiting it to people who have like a huge lot, like acres, like that, or that have even lots that could fit a six hundred square, but like, I want, I want this because I want people to have access to it. And so if they wanna build three hundred square feet and someone that they know wants to live in it, then I don't have a problem with that.
That's why, Kate, I asked that, because I, like, somebody mentioned Fremont, Manly earlier, and when you, you're Davis and Don Howard Miller Drive and all that. When you're up there, those are like nine hundred square foot houses. They're gonna have a house there, too, and they're nine hundred. But you could definitely put three, four hundred square foot uh A D U above a garage there. And there are some, and they shouldn't be there, but I know of some that that are there.
Well, if those people are gonna put addition on.
But if these people want to bring people into their home, they should just build an addition, though. And then you're, then you don't have to go through any of this, you just build an additions. And then you're good to go. You can move your family members in, you can move your caregiver in, you can move your kid in. This accessory dwelling unit, even if it's a ta- see, for me, if it is attached and you have a garage that's attached, and you're gonna put another living space above it, I don't care who lives there from the code sense of it, because it's attached to your home. It's when you separate them and they're independently living from the other family. So if you wanna bring someone, and it's a caregiver, and you're considering it's um, with your family, then that is just an addition or a renovation or alteration.
That's where you don't necessarily need the separate kitchen or whatever, it's just an addition.
Well, they could both kitchen in there, though. They could provide basic um sanitary, sleeping um for them, but it's just a, an alteration or a.
So, so let me ask you this, in your perception, because one of the things is, to, to what extent is this separate from the primary residence? So if you build a little cottage in the backyard, it's clearly separate. If you build above a detached garage, it's separate. But if you build above an attached garage, or you build in the back of the kitchen with an addition, it could still be a separate living unit. But it's attached to the main house, so for fire or whatever, it's, it's one building.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know that they're charging rent until I got a complaint.
But you would still have to give a permit to write the, to build the addition.
If, can you say that one more time?
You would still have to give a permit for them to build the addition.
Yes, but there's nothing that stops.
Them from re- then renting it out.
Me, but like, I couldn't deny a permit for an addition. On any, you, I, it would be, it would be.
But you, but if you built an addition that was not, like, had no interior connection.
Then that would, see, that's when you start getting into um multiple, independent multiple, but if you're talking about that, if you have, yeah, I would, see that, I haven't had that come through where someone's trying to, because that would probably raise a red flag where there's no connectivity between the two houses.
Maybe there are.
I keep losing the backing of you here.
Yeah, I have a few more.
Yeah.
So, um, um, we talked about whether um, whether it would increase the building density or not. And I think that that, um, it's number A two under twenty-nine point one. It would increase the density if it was a separate building.
I think we'll modify it later.
Look at that. Um, with the non-conforming lots, I think it might be worth looking into whether um we expect them to bring a lot into being a conforming lot before they're allowed to do something else to it.
Well, they might not be able to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Inside.
So, but that's, I'm throwing it out there, because why is it non-conforming?
Probably it was, uh, because at one time the, the lots, the lot size was allowed to be a forty by a hundred in that zoning district, and now it has to be a hundred by a hundred.
So they really could be separate. It really could be reasonable that they could put another unit, for whatever reason, they're not, not related. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, we were just talking about that before.
Right.
It could, you're saying that they bring it into conformity, if it's the wrong lot size.
Well, not for that, but are there other reasons that it might be that they, we would feel necessary that they bring it into conformity in order to allow them to move forward? Would this be a method of making that happen?
Of war on pan.
Okay, we don't have to believe that.
Yeah, maybe if there's, no, I, I can't.
We talked briefly about it, but um, I think that we need to make sure somewhere in there, we talk about who's responsible for um, the other services, you know, and I'll talk about the utilities in a second, but trash removal, mowing, property maintenance in general. Um, you know, I live in the town, not the village, and we have to pay for the trash units. And if they won't pick it up, if it's too heavy or the lid's not closed, you know, like, so would.
Well, so on trash specifically, as per the contract with Syracuse Hollers, an A D U would be a, there would be an additional set of bins, additional cost, just like any of the housing that we have where there's two or three.
So the.
They pay per additional.
Owner of the parcel who is residing there would be required to provide that for the A D U.
All of that, real estate taxes, water, sewer, whatever, because that's included as part of.
The owner of the A D U, not necessarily the rent.
Correct.
They could pass it along, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think that it's important to have um it designated with a separate entrance. Because of one, well, several things, but mail, how is mail gonna get delivered? And are they gonna have a separate official address? And then that leads into the nine-one-one um address, and how does that work?
It'll apply to the post office for new.
So how, you know, we, I wanna make sure that when we get it as a planning board, that somehow they can provide to us or have previously provided it to you in a checklist or saying, yep, took care of that, took care of that, took care of that, so that we're not standing there and having that conversation with them. And they're like, oh, I didn't know I had to do that, because that should be done before we even get it.
I think a lot of that can get taken care of in the application process. Say, here's a checklist.
But that's a good point about mail.
The mail, nine-one-one, they have to have us, you know, I don't know the details of how that works, but you wanna make sure they can get there. So a separate entrance that's clearly marked, if it needs a sidewalk, you know, all of that kinda stuff. Um, it does talk about pedestrian access somewhere.
When you say entrance, a separate curb cut on the road?
No, 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 a separate um door, a separate residence or
Okay.
unit entry, whatever the proper word.
Is that required under, okay, New York Building Code to have a separate ingress egress for?
Well, that, if you're, if it's too family, if it's a townhouse, then yes, you would have that. And it's that, you know, if it was a single, if it's, if it's a detached dwelling unit, we're not gonna have any issues. But it's, again, I don't know how we regulate the A D Us over the garage. Because once you start doing that, you start talking about a multifamily dwelling unit, and you start talking about firewalls and things of that nature that they're gonna have.
How do they get there?
This doesn't cover that, though.
If it's a, say it's a detached garage.
Are we gonna remove attached garages from people living in them, above them?
No, no, but they still have to have an entrance separately, with a staircase that goes up to it separately from the actual.
Well, if somebody's gonna live in like a basement, right, you can't, you, you're not supposed to have a, a, a bedroom in a basement. Unless you have certain egress. So if we start to put people over garages, um, I think we have the same, the same thought. And you're talking about like a fire escape or a, of the ladder that you throw out the window and such, I think that's what we're wondering.
But if you rent out above your garage and you come in through the main door, where's this, where's the difference between that and an A D U?
So what I thought the question was, it, right.
I think that, that's what.
I think this is one of the ways that it gets differentiated.
Yes, because it's in an existing home.
And that's a important piece.
Yeah.
Can't have.
Between additions and alterations and an A D U. Because an A D U, that's why we're here, is to define these things. And an A D U has a separate point of entry. If it's a basement, it has an egress stairwell, like, it can all be done. And yes, it costs money, but if the, 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 you know, hurdle to doing this for somebody who needs to provide for a caregiver or an adult child, then they're doing an addition and alteration, right? Because it's a family-related situation. But if you have an attached garage and you have a breezeway between them, and you have to go in the garage to go up there, well, if that person upstairs has a heart attack or a seizure, the police and the fire and the ambulance need to get up there. And they're not gonna know when they show up, that they have to go in through the front door, and then they have to go in here. If their person is calling from nine-one-one and saying, I'm, I live here, not that house, I live above the garage because it's a home, they need a separate.
But when the car pitch is on fire in the garage, and it blocks their egress down the one stairs to get up, I think that's the question, where you asking Joe about the, the New York State code. About, so do, do you now above the garage require a secondary exit so that person can escape, have egress during a fire? That's blocking their existing only egress, which I think it does.
I, I have seen some, the sam- some sample legislations, and uh, many of them do have ingress and egress, is, is the definition.
Well, I think it's very important. I think that's maybe the core part here is that it's separate, if it is separate ingress and egress, that's how, like, that is one of the things that makes me.
Yes, yes.
A D U.
Provision.
So that would go right in the definition, basically, it would have to be.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
As part of the definition.
So if you were to have that and you had a single door, like an apartment complex that got in there, and then left is building A, building, would that count? Or do you truly need a wholly separate?
I think that that would work if it was properly signed.
Okay.
Two mailboxes, two numbers, or two, you know, and then.
And that's a single entrance, and then.
Whether. And then you go when you get in, but it has to be properly signed, have proper signage. And then whether it's above a garage and needs a separate escape, whatever, that's individual project-related that you would look at when it first comes in.
And it's a single entrance, what we're saying, from a common area. So what you're talking about is you enter an apartment building through a door, but you're still in the common area.
Yes.
Separating entrances for each one of the apartments is what makes it an apartment and a dwelling.
Right.
But the buildings are attached now.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Every single one, even if the building is attached, or it's above the garage door, uh, by proper, the garage, you need a separate door.
Because I, because I would consider if the building is attached, that now a two-family dwelling, which is not allowed in most areas.
Well, I think that's one of the things we have to clarify is, is the A D U, I almost think it was like a thing to say, an A D U is not a two-family, and A D U is a two-family. So they were talking about zone change.
If they're connected.
Yeah, so we now need to say, you can do a two-family in more zones than what you can do now, because we let you build a cottage in the back, but why won't we let you build an addition on the back of your house, which is saving you money? Then we can do both. So we need, I think it's a two, it's both in.
It's an important, but. Yeah, and that needs to be clearly defined, and then maybe the other code needs to be modified. So this is gonna have fingers that go out into other things, for sure. The same thing, similar thing would apply to the utilities. Um, and I wouldn't exclude that, or make that only be water and sewer. I would put electrical in there as well on, um, let's see, it's, is it, it's number four, under
C.
twenty-nine point one, you say C, C four, it's the bottom of the third or fourth page. Um, and that, there's no way to determine ahead of time whether under all of these multiple ways that this could be put together, whether you would need a new water or well or septic. The water connection might be a little bit easier to figure out based on Aqua's requirements. But um, without knowing what the existing septic design was for, you would have no way of knowing whether it could accommodate additional units or not.
I think that's a code enforcement.
Yeah, so that would, but I wanna know that when it comes to us, that, that it's done, right?
That somebody's looking at.
Like, that they've submitted to you what you need to know to check with the septic plan to see what was done. And you can tell them ahead of time before they even submit anything, no, you need to go and get a stamp drawn for expansion, which is not all that difficult typically, or a new system or whatever. Same thing with the well, um, if these are really small units. Now, if these are multiple little units, that's another question.
Are we allowing for multiple, that three dwelling units?
And that was another comment or question I had, is when we're counting the twenty-five, is that one permit per lot or one permit per unit? Because I heard a, you know, of an instance where somebody wanted to come in and put a bunch of little, little ones.
Yeah.
And how does that get counted? And do we require all of those to have, like, what if they were yurts or tent platforms or something like that? Is that, at, at what point do, do these things count or not count, when they have all of the items included in the definition?
Permit structure as well, right?
But you could have people living in yurts for the summer.
Are we regulating, so that when you talk about the septic, are we regulating in here? And I just don't recall saying, how many people can live in these? Because if you're talking about a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, I mean, you can't, I, I, I can't imagine.
That's regulated already.
A six hundred.
So I'm probably just following the, the law we already have, like, if it's only got a certain number of bedrooms, you probably have somebody living there.
But if it doesn't have a bedroom, it's just a studio.
Because what I'm thinking of, when we get into septics, and it, and it keeps going on about septics, whether you add four people to your house, you're not operating your septic, you got four more people who will, right? You got four more people washing their hands, taking showers. So if you just put an A D U outside and tie in two other septic, I think the only issue you have to worry about is tapping into that septic and causing a problem with the septic. But wouldn't we require if they do anything to that septic, how, would they have, have it tested?
Well, yes, and the.
In a certified?
Additions in, the county would like to see if you're doing living additions. They would like to see the plan so they can ensure that your current septic system can handle it in past feet. But there's nothing stopping myself from having four more kids and putting like, four more children in mine in the county not ever doing anything, it's not myself to make sure that my septic system. But if you are doing an addition or all addition or modifications within X feet of the septic system, it should go to the county. Within X feet of the Leach Field, it should go to the county, and that would all have to go. They want to see all of that.
And that covers that, because it, just knowing that a letter has been submitted, that the applicant has sent it to the county, if they're adding facilities, that, that it's done.
Then you don't have to worry about.
And then we don't have to send them away, or, and to come back or have questions.
So we let the checklist that it dates.
Yeah, have it done, like, do you know where.
Yeah, no, I know what you're saying, we wanna see the.
Yeah, a letter from the county.
The letter from Board of Health that says, yep, we.
Or, or the fact that they've submitted it, and it's good. So, with their application.
That's, that's a good start, but we wanna see the final.
But you guys are gonna hold until you get the final.
But it would be fine with me if the checklist on the application included all these things, and it was submitted, and I don't have to see the piece of paper, because I know that the town has received it and that's been satisfied and it's on file. That's good enough for me, um, and then.
If I could just get to Joe, Joe, the question that she asked, and I think it's valid.
Yeah.
Each structure has to have a permit. I can't have six buildings and get one permit.
Correct.
Okay, that's how I read it, I just wanna confirm that.
Yeah, now, the question also raised, which is a good one, is do we wanna limit each property to one accessory dwelling unit per property?
That's a big question, because that comes into the acreage and stuff, and so.
Which was your first one, was it?
Yeah, it's a residential.
The size of the.
Well, it's, I mean, I think.
Size and quantity per acreage.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, again, kinda this is the first pass. I think it would make a lot of sense to say it's limited to one.
Yes.
You know, especially in the first round of permits, things like that. And then maybe, I know there's been conversations amongst residents about these like tiny home releases where you have maybe uh six homes on an acre or even a half acre, I think that's the next logical step is once we've got ADUs working, we know how they work, we've got permits out, we've seen some, you know, how to respond to it, maybe additions or changes to the law, then maybe we would come in and say as like a separate piece, you know, you know, a collection of two or more accessory dwelling units, pure additional rules, things that, you know, because then we'd have to start talking about how hard hard they can be and more things like that, I think in the initial, we should limit it to one.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I I completely agree with that and I I would think before we took that next step, I would wanna do a ton of research because I've read about neighborhoods in California that pass ADU laws and
Yeah.
they, I think I circulated that um podcast episode about that, um from the New York Times or whatever it was, but they had neighborhoods where they were like raising houses and building all these ADUs and it completely changed.
Yeah.
Like it wasn't a neighborhood anymore, they, people were being bought out of their houses because it was so profitable and so it it and it backfired on what their goal was. So we do, I think we wanna be very careful about how we do that.
We don't wanna inventivize building little neighborhoods that are smart, right?
Right.
It'd be amazing approach, the whole thing would be amazing approach, you start with the one, we look at that.
Yeah, so I'm just aware of the task, so I wanna make sure anybody else in the in the group here that wants to.
Parents still have it.
I have only like two or three more little things. Um one of the other things I wanna make sure that gets included in your initial review is that the fire department has checked that they have access. If they were to build something way in the back, you know, I wanna make sure that that's done, that the fire department has signed off on it. Um and then that there in, that there would be appropriate screening for neighbors if that's applicable and that might be a little bit trickier and that might be something that we actually have to work with them on and they come and they show and we go back and forth. But that should be included that they need to consider it so that they, we know ahead of time, so that when they come and they've got something right on the line and they have no screening, then we can say, actually, you do need to have some screening there, so it doesn't come as a surprise, both for time and cost for them.
When you say screening, you're talking about visual uh?
Visual screening, it could be fence, it could be plantings, it could be, um and then the final thing, I think I had, oh, the um wanna make sure on that number four that we had electrical on there, because does it have a separate electric service? You know, is there even appropriate um electric service available for that? Like if they already have a hundred and fifty panel, can they, how does, how does that all work? And do they have enough and is it a separate line, is it a line from the house? Is that all ready the way you want it before we get it?
I think that would be great, we'd force you to have a separate meter on the separate door.
Yeah, so you have, you have to.
So there's that and then parking, um it says, oh, though, no additional parking, I know we talked about that. I would argue that um we need to show that there's at least, that there is a parking space for the ADU, because even if it's um a family or a couple or an individual that is living in the village and plans on utilizing um, you know, public transportation and we're trying to encourage that, I think that it's important to um have an account that they may have a guest, they may have um, you know, services come to help them, people get stuff delivered all the time, that kind of thing, and they very well be that there's enough parking already, like it might not be a problem, but that we, that they know that we are gonna be checking to make sure that there's a spot, like if it's in the village and there's only two places possible, or are they planning on utilizing on street parking? Okay, fine, so I just think that you say there's none.
The villages won't be.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, but um.
Well, we wanna, how far do you wanna go with that, would we actually say you have to put in like a paved or stone area? Because I could just see people just driving up on grass and.
Well, that's where it would depend on if they have enough or if people have huge driveways and it's fine, then there's room for a car. But if there isn't, then they would maybe need to do something, but with having it in there, the expectation is set so that it doesn't come as a surprise when we review it and say, you need to have a spot and they're like, well, nobody said I had to, right, we can look back on that, okay, I'm done, thank you for your patience.
I think there were a lot of good comments that came up. I would caution the town board not to make it so restrictive and give the planning board some leeway to determine whether or not, and I'll use parking for example, not to say you gotta have one parking spot to give us the ability to look at the actual project when it comes in.
To do the parking assessment.
And say, parking's fine or we need an extra spot or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
You say, you give the planning board the the right to look at that, so you say it here, just remove the additional parking.
Yeah, I think it's a good point.
Yeah, and I I get just one thing, I went to South Carolina, friends of ours that live here have a place in South Carolina, and we stayed at the Frog, which is a furnished room.
Where in South Carolina were you?
Uh?
Where in South Carolina?
At Charleston, and it was, it's a beautiful neighborhood, they built very close and stuff, very nice. I stayed at the Frog, their house, which is Frog means furnished room above over garage. And that was, I wanna speak to your six hundred feet, that's too much. It was twenty by twenty, which is what more its garages are, that's four hundred feet, it had a kitchen in it, it had a bathroom, it had a living room, it had the electrical separate as a panel and all that, so I don't think the six hundred feet, it needs to be at least relooked at, I think it's too much.
The minimum is four hundred.
Four hundred, fine, yes, that's how.
Yeah, you have to have four hundred, you can't go less than that.
Yeah. Yes, all makes sense.
So just, we do have a town board meeting coming up in about ten minutes and is anybody who has, wants to share a comment, wants to share a comment?
I want one thing that is really heavily on my mind, uh we don't have any provision for a front yard, um anything, an accessory structure can go in the front yard and that needs to be addressed in general and need to.
It's too much.
She was in here.
This was.
Now, we were talking about it.
We're talking about it already.
Either adjacent or setback or.
Perfect, okay, that's what I get.
Jamie, Jamie, I mentioned that before you got here, that has to be behind you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only thing I haven't talked about, I don't realize, I mean, even though that I have a whole different game I play, I'm very fancy to begin with, but one of the things that I have to look at, I don't, because we're looking at historic districts and having that too, that has not been addressed in this particular conversation, it shouldn't be along the way of the fact you are affected by that.
Well, I wanna thank everybody for really providing this discussion.
Thank you for joining us.
I hope everybody had fun because I had a lot of.